Well, even though the issue wasn't important, they said they were just authorized. That simply started signaling that they're saying, you can't do it.
You're supposed to be up at the table. Yeah. Where's your, where's your partners in person?
See, we'll be here. I don't think Henry is gonna make, but I don't know. Give it out.
We don't have fuel? Or IT guys that are here?
Vacation.
All right, I know, I do too.
I do too.
Thank you.
We have to sit up front. I don't know if they're, that means they're gonna throw something at us.
Yeah.
The chief is here, so.
I got you covered.
Are you? Okay.
Hey, Sue.
Two minutes, that's pretty good.
There's a heat's on the next room also.
Thank you.
Five dollars a slice.
Oh my god.
All right, now we can get started, I guess.
Yeah, go ahead, start the meeting, yes.
Yeah.
Um, I'm waiting on the, uh, video. We can go ahead and start. Okay, perfect. We go call this work session later. Tonight, we are doing a joint work session with the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. We have Commissioner PC, Garrett, and Margaret McGruder. Alex, I'm gonna hand it over to you and let you take it off.
Right, Mayor and Council, thank you. Thanks Commissioners for being here this evening. So I think we are going to start with a presentation on the status of the interior drainage analysis being completed by the Drainage District. I don't know if Lori or Chris, if you want to say anything about that before we launch into that?
Uh, Jeff Winker is, I believe my son's name. He was gonna open with a short presentation about current status and then maybe continue with Wes Polton's also joining virtually to talk a little bit about how they got to where they are now. And there are, uh, the current draft. The blue area could be brought into the, the gray area would, uh, be considered shaded zone as that is not regulated by our. And I'll turn it over to Jeff.
Hold on, before you, before we turn it over to anyone, I just, before we continue the meeting, I just want to inform everyone that all meetings are live and recorded through YouTube. Please make sure, unless you are speaking, your device is on mute. Thank you. Go ahead.
Jeff, if you wanted to go ahead and get started and just, um, you know, a short presentation of where we're at right now and how we got here?
I couldn't hear all that, is that for me?
Yes.
That is.
Okay, so, just a brief history. After Katrina, the requirements to be accredited went up significantly. And the Corps came down in 2007. Katrina was 2005. And introduced us to their, their upgraded process. And we started on that in 2009, really. And then, uh, a long progression of studies by the Corps and about three different private engineering firms. And, uh, so, uh, fast forward to December of 2019, the Corps issued a letter and studies called certification by the Corps. And that's, uh, that they certified that the levee is sound and should hold up to a, uh, a hundred-year event. And then, there's been three of those since the levee was built in the twenties. And then, and part of it is, that's the main thing for certification. But with that is a projection of flooding that would occur during a hundred-year event. But that has to include different, two different things, which is a hundred-year level in the river. Which is basically, uh, the ninety-six flood, the Vanport flood, and the sixty-four flood, all were within inches of twenty-seven feet above sea level. Top of the levee is on average thirty-two feet above sea level. So there's a buffer there. It actually is tall enough to qualify as a five-hundred-year flood protection. And the certification is about one-hundred-year. And then, uh, so there's all of that, and then the, uh, flooding, in our case, is driven mostly by rainfall. So, uh, the city's storm system generally looks at and designs around twenty-five-year storm events. But accreditation calls by FEMA and the Corps is built around a hundred-year event, which in rough numbers is nine inches of rain in seventy-two hours. It's kind of hard to imagine, but that's what they're designing to. And then, uh, so, having been working on this for twenty, or since nineteen, uh, two thousand and nine, got certification by the Corps in nineteen. I called a meeting with the city and Lori put together a really good meeting with FEMA and the state national flood insurance flood map coordinator and the county. And so everyone was introduced to the, um, current state of the accredited certification. The, uh, the study, the part that's most concerning is the flood map, just built around the interior drainage analysis by Wes. And takes into account all the water coming out of the sky or landing in the watershed of Jackson Creek, or landing on top of the district. And it flows over ground into ditches to our pumps. So think of it as all a moving thing and the, and the goal is to capture the peak, how much land is flooded with at least a foot of water at the peak of the hundred-year event. So that's what you see, and the rough draft from twenty sixteen, first draft, not rough, showed that. And then, another thing that's key is that the study was built around the twenty-ten publicly available LiDAR, which the Corps approved. And the existing flood maps, if you look at them, they're dated, uh, November sixteenth of two thousand and eleven, but they're built on the same twenty-ten LiDAR. So learning that, the city, uh, and from a due diligence point of view, decided to do more LiDAR. And that took several months, and so did the mapping process. In the first half of twenty, we decided to wait for Mollum County to sort out the details of the technical aspects of how to do the maps with FEMA, because this is kind of the leading edge of the technology of maps. And then, uh, so then, uh, the city also had the FEMA make a preliminary view of the certification documents from the Corps, which was a good thing to do. And, um, there was some debate and on some of the key factors. The city went ahead and had Wes do a sensitivity analysis on a couple of those factors. Didn't turn out to have much of an effect. And then, the LiDAR came in, in, uh, late, late fall or winter. And, uh, then, uh, so the, Wes issued draft maps in October of twenty. LiDAR got done after that, and then July, they issued draft maps based on the updated LiDAR. And that seems like enough. Lori Elder, what else would you want to say about the history?
I think that's good, Jeff. That brings us up to current date. I guess just to point out that, based on that updated LiDAR that was incorporated, that's what you're seeing in the draft maps for you. It did remove, um, it did remove hundred-year, proposed hundred-year floodplain throughout some of the urban areas in the city, which is what we were hoping to see. We knew for a fact that certain areas definitely had been developed and, and filled over the years. And so, we are, we are seeing that reflected here. I guess I'd just turn it over to James with Wes Consultants, so he can maybe talk about a little bit of the study and what went into that. He's available virtually with us tonight.
Hi, is everybody able to hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Good. Hopefully the hotel's wifi is gonna hold up. I'm, I'm out of state right now. As Lori and Jeff said, I'm gonna try to give kind of a ten-thousand-foot overview of the study upon which the mapping was ultimately based, giving you some insight as to how that was developed and the process we went through for creating those maps. I will say that if anybody does notice I start to lag, I can turn my video off, because I do want to do some screen sharing at some point, I think, is, is the plan. But if, if getting rid of my video helps, that, that might be an idea. So, yeah, I think Jeff gave a very good overview of where we came from. The, the initial phases or the initial task of our study was to conduct what's called this interior drainage analysis. It's a required analysis done for FEMA certification of your levee system. And what that's attempting to do is to try and quantify the flooding that could be expected during a base flood event, a hundred-year event, on the interior side of a certified levee. So that is, as he said, kind of a process of looking at the amount of rainfall that one might expect in the contributing watershed, and how that water would then flow into the district, the protected district itself. As well as, since this is sort of a modern approach, we're now capable, from a modeling perspective, to look more detailed at rainfall that actually falls on the interior of the district. And that, in many cases, because these levee-protected areas are kind of like big bathtubs in a sense, with various inputs and one, one output, one drain, that being the pump systems. Oftentimes, the precipitation is almost as much of a driving factor as any of the contributing streams that might happen to come in and provide water to the district. So we did hydraulic modeling beginning in two thousand and sixteen, I think it was. We used a, a combination of different pieces of software, HEC, HMS, to do the, the hydrologic quantifications, how much rainfall and how much water comes in through the, the contributing watershed. And then, once it got into the district, we routed it across the land and to the pumps using hydraulic modeling software. And that was done using a software package called Flow2D. Flow2D is capable of not only analyzing channelized portions of the districts, such as the ditches and, and the main drainage systems out there. That's done in a, in a one-dimensional approach, kind of a classical, traditional, tried and true approach. But it's also able to handle what happens when, when the floodwaters overwhelm those channels and get outside that. They tend to flow over land then. And the conventional approach of one-dimensional modeling just really doesn't handle that, because you don't know where the water's going to go. Once it gets onto the relatively flat ground, it tends to just spread. And that's why we employed a two-dimensional approach in that area. So we utilized data available at the time, the two thousand and ten LiDAR was the basis for that. We set up our computational grid, and it's about a fifty-by-fifty square foot grid for that analysis process. And we hooked up the various drains, if you will, the pump systems, and the interior lift, lift pumps and those kind of features that move the water through the district. And we set up a scenario, and we modeled that scenario with some, uh, initial estimates of what the various parameters about how that model should work would be set up. And then, once we got a first cut of that, we, uh, we started doing some, uh, some calibration. So we were able to look at aerial photographs from the nineteen ninety-six flood event that had some, through the majority of the district, had some pretty good documentation of what was wet and what wasn't. And we adjusted various modeling parameters until we were able to pretty well reproduce that scenario. So we were taking the, the ninety-six rainfall event, the ninety-six conditions in the river, and we calibrated our model for that. Once that was done, we then looked at a theoretical one percent storm. It's pretty close to the ninety-six year. It's a little bit bigger, as I recall, or a little bit more volume, perhaps. And so, we took, uh, the calibrated model and then put the theoretical one percent storm event that we're supposed to, to develop these IDAs based upon. And we ran the model there, and that gave a resulting, basically, it's a, it's a gridded output of water surface elevations in a, in a certain area. And, uh, that output was kind of the underlying basis of that initial study, or the, the results that came out of that initial study. And, uh, as Jeff indicated, then, uh, feedback came from FEMA that, yes, that's good. We want you to actually modify the mapping now as well, the official FEMA flood hazard mapping for the area. And that then kicked off the, the next phase, which took place over the last about a year and a half or so, maybe two years, of developing revised flood hazard mapping through the LOMER process. And since we were doing this with sort of that cutting-edge approach, using a combination of one-dimensional and two-dimensional analyses, we were finding ourselves sort of at the cutting edge of how this was supposed to be done. The modeling is something that's been around for a long time, in terms of how to do that. But how to integrate that into the standardized flood hazard mapping environment was a little bit more challenging. So we, we gathered parties together, including FEMA Region Ten and FEMA Headquarters back on the East Coast and the county and stuff like that, and talked about a methodology that we had devised about how we would go about producing those maps. And while they weren't able to give a, a authoritative thumbs up as to how we were gonna do it, they all kind of nodded their heads and said, "That sounds reasonable," so we proceeded to do that. And, uh, as Jeff indicated, we came up with the first set of maps back, back in the fall, and had a look at those. And in many respects, we weren't quite satisfied with how those were turning out. And do I understand that you have seen or can presently see the mapping right now?
Yes. Yes, they have, not the most recent, well, does this, yes, this does have the recent tax law data as well. So, yeah, they do have.
Okay, so the first kind of that mapping, as I think Lori had indicated, didn't reflect some of the development that had been done out there. There's a couple of roads that didn't appear, and, and it just wasn't as accurate of a terrain basis upon which to make that mapping, uh, based on. So they commissioned, uh, some LiDAR out there and developed a, a much more accurate, uh, digital elevation model upon which we were able to take the original water surface elevations that we generated from the modeling process. And then, uh, basically, it looks like the process of this, you've got a certain elevation of water, and you try to figure out where that water surface elevation intersects the ground or the terrain, and that becomes the delineating boundary of what's considered wet, uh, out there. And then, um, that was, that was an awful lot of area that was wet. One of the, the aspects of these rain-on-grid two-dimensional analyses, where you've got, you know, your source of water is everywhere, it means that basically every little depression out there wound up with a bunch of water in it, because it doesn't have, didn't have anywhere to run off to. So we quickly decided, yep, that's not gonna work. So we had to filter that out. And we picked, uh, it kind of in conjunction with dialogue with, with Region Ten. Uh, I think it was ten thousand square foot for a minimum area that we were gonna bother showing on those things. So that, that definitely cut down on the number of little blue areas that we're showing out there. And, uh, that was the first process we went through for filtering that out. And then, uh, again, following directions from Region Ten, we looked at areas that were showing as wet, but were less than one foot of depth. And we filtered those out and set those to a different type of mapping, not criteria, but a different, different zone. It's a shaded X versus a, a detailed AE zone. So what you see on your mapping out there is, is, is showing a variety of different flood zones. Only two of them really are new. And I'm not sure, is it, Lori, is it worth me to try to, to screen share, or can they see these already?
They can definitely see them, so if you want to talk through it, they could probably follow. It's up to you if you want to screen share, it should work.
Let's try the screen share.
Okay.
We'll give it a whirl.
Okay, let's try.
If it's too laggy and isn't gonna work, then, then we can bail on that. Um, I'm gonna look at a particular page. Am I waiting for authorization to screen share, or?
You should be able to, go ahead and try.
Yeah, it is working. There we go. Okay, so this screen, and let me nab, okay, here we are. So I am on, uh, page three of that mapping. It's particularly of note for the good folks that live, oops, wrong button, that live in the scapoose area. So I'll just kind of zoom in like this, uh, in this area, because we can see a variety of different types of flood zones. So, the blue, uh, is an area that, um, has a detailed flood, a flood elevation derived for it, based on the original modeling. And it has a depth greater than one foot. So any of this, this area out here is, is all gonna be flooded or inundated to at least one foot of depth. And then, you can see from, from, hopefully my cursor's showing up, I'm right at the very top of the screen. You can see that the blue is surrounded in many cases by sort of a shaded gray area. That is the, the area that is less than one foot of depth out there. So they were considered wet based on the modeling that we did, uh, but did not exhibit depths, uh, of, of a foot or more. So FEMA regulations allowed us to map that as, instead of being detailed zone AE, which is the, the blue, we had some shaded X. And, uh, that is regulated in a different fashion for the purposes of flood hazard determinations. And this is a, a basically an example, a pretty good, pretty good area that shows a variety of different features. These big open areas, and you can see these squiggly lines that identify what the base flood elevation is. And if it's not that way, it's labeled with a static label like this, elevation fourteen right here. This squiggly line's a ten. You can see some of the main drainage channels, there's blue lines in here. Those are features that were modeled, as I said, in a one-dimensional, kind of a classical-fashioned routing flow, just directly down those channels. But in many cases, they connect to these lower, flat-lying areas that just kind of, it, it spills out of the channel and floods like this. Now, the, um, while they're mapped the same way, there are two different sorts of flooding that can be originating here. One of them is from the, the channel flow that spills out, basically, stuff that's being routed down the creek, uh, or down the slough, and spills out and floods the, the surrounding area in that, in a fashion kind of like what's up here. And then I think these areas up here, like for example, are more associated with the, the nine inches of rainfall that one, one could expect for a one percent event. And what that, uh, with that water coming, you know, out of the sky is going to result in, as far as ponding goes. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else that I wanted to kind of cover. That's, that's sort of a ten-thousand-foot overview of what we look like out here. Lori or Jeff, anything else in particular that I am overlooking that I should mention, that you'd like me to mention?
I think that's a pretty good overview. Since we don't have a lot of time during this work session, I guess perhaps, Mayor, would you like to open it up to questions at this point?
Yeah, I wanted to start with a question. Just, I just, we received a letter from Air Park Development, the owner of the, the property, the top property there, you know, the airport on those, inside of the new road. And then they had a couple of questions in the letter, and I don't know if he's got a copy of this letter. And I don't have my reading glasses, but, you know, one of their points that they are making on the mapping is, first, there are reasons why the maps are questionable from a mythology standpoint. Methodology, I, I eyes aren't very good without my readers. Such as the map's failure to account for existing public drainage systems. And that, my question is, is I, I actually recall this property when it was being proposed to sell to PCC, who ultimately chose to build it on the other side. And they built the entire drain field on the other side of the road to account for that property. And I was just wondering, does this take into that account, or what, what's being taken in, and what are they missing?
That's a very good question. Um, I'll take a stab at that. So when we're considering, um, the type of modeling and the type of events that are incorporated into flood hazard mapping, we're looking at what's called that one percent annual chance exceedance event. It's, it's colloquially, colloquial, I'm not gonna try to say that. It's, uh, normally referred to as the one-hundred-year flood event, in the sense that it, it has a recurrence interval of, on average, once every hundred years. And I think Jeff indicated earlier that, uh, your, your stormwater drainage system, uh, or storm, storm drain system of most municipalities, and I couldn't say what it is for certain in scapoose, is typically either a twenty or a twenty-five year, depending upon what your local ordinance is. So, uh, as far as FEMA has been concerned for a long time, their standard, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Their standard of practice for flood hazard mapping and flood hazard modeling out here says basically that the, the, the relative difference in size between a one-hundred-year event and a twenty-year event is substantial. And since the, the type of piping that's usually involved for these drains, you know, they're, on average, maybe two foot in diameter. At the highest, they're typically one foot, oftentimes smaller than that. Dynamically, what tends to happen in these events is that a lot of those systems, they become clogged or they become overwhelmed with just so much water that they can't, you know, it, it's a much larger event, a much larger amount of water than what they're designed to handle. So the standard approach, and it's a little bit of a shortcut, is that FEMA has said, just, you disregard them. You don't consider, uh, storm drain systems when you're looking at a hundred-year flow event. When you look at the, the orders of magnitude, not quite orders of magnitude, but the magnitude of difference between a hundred-year storm and a twenty-year storm, it's so big that they figured, hey, those pipes just aren't gonna do anything to really have any meaningful effect. So they, so they don't include them. It also makes the analysis basically, it, it pairs it down to a scale and a size that can be modeled. To include all of the storm drain systems out here would be a, a much larger undertaking. And computationally, especially with the size of the drains we're looking at here, until very recently, I'm not even sure you could do it, uh, just the computer processing power just wasn't there. There's just too much complexity. So, uh, typical, uh, and as, and as is the case in these mappings, or in these maps, storm drain systems are just not accounted for, at least not directly, not the pipes, anyway. Any ditch systems and stuff like that would have been picked up, uh, in the LiDAR typically. But, uh, you know, cross culverts that would have drained, say, across the, this roadway in particular that you're talking about, like if there's a pipe there, you know, that, that, uh, you know, may be able to influence the, the drainage patterns of this area up here. It's just not considered for this type of analysis and this type of mapping.
Here. So I, I guess just to take this from a theoretical standpoint, down to kind of a more practical one. Alex and Lori and Chris and I all had a meeting with Air Park, uh, two weeks ago to discuss whether or not the phasing for their project could be reordered, which would, in all likelihood, be a major modification, would be a major undertaking if we're going to do that. What, the, the first two phases, as well as three, are predicated on their well. The preliminary data that we got on their well is, is actually performing beyond our expectations, so that looks really good. But what they found when they bought this mapping, was that practically speaking, phase one of this development would no longer be feasible. Phase two, and part of phase three, could be, but getting together a parcel that there is a, there is a potential purchaser, that we don't know anything about, I think because they signed non-disclosure agreements and, and couldn't tell us about. But just putting together a parcel that would be necessary in order to meet that person's needs and figuring out how we could get the infrastructure there, whether we could use a driveway, all of those things really put feasibility in, in doubt. And part of the reason this particular area came into the urban growth boundary in two thousand and eleven was that, at least for this area, at least for Columbia County, it was relatively dry or didn't have very many floodpoint issues as compared to other places. If there had been mapping such as this at the time of that application, you know, you never know what's going to happen. But my opinion is, it would have, it, it's probably pretty unlikely that that would have been brought in. The Air Park knew that there would need to be a certain amount of fill that would occur on this in order to get it graded and ready for development. And under the former mapping, that was pretty feasible and pretty cut and dry. Under the proposed but not yet adopted mapping, if that is put into place because of state laws and because of our own code, then it will be very difficult to do that. And so, the impact on our, the impact if this map is adopted on our urban growth expansion area is very significant. It would require probably a major change, which means they would have to, they could take what they have, but they'd have to go through the planning commission process, everything else, because it's, this represents more than a ten percent change, which is our threshold. And then, as far as what could be built, how could it be built? And then as far as what could be built, how could it be built? It is really negatively impacted. You know, Chris, Chris made the comment during our meeting of the reason we brought in this land is because we knew that we were going to do fill on it and and we knew that we wanted a compact development to take advantage of all the infrastructure, pipes, roads, everything to be able to get people officially onto site, that we know that Scappus, because of its topography, other areas are less feasible as far as industrial and commercial development. And so again, this is, this is data that looks dramatically different from the data that we previously had, the mapping that we previously have. As far as the cost of doing a further study of how much the existing pipes and other infrastructure beyond ditches that we have, how much those would help? What Air Park Development has indicated to us is that is a significant expense. So what what we were hoping to do is to flag this issue for you, the council, as well as the county commission, because again, this is, I mean, you're you're taking a, you're taking an area that almost all of it appeared to be developable, and you've made it into an area where a lot of it's not developable. And then you have issues with contiguous parcels, is that maybe this area is dry and this area is dry, but you're not going to be able to net them out because you have this flood plain in between. And because of our cut fill balance rules, which is zero net, once this map is in place, I mean, we we don't see, we don't see how it can work, to be honest. Just be completely blunt with you. I don't know what will be behind door number two, because I don't think there's door number two.
Thank you. Are there any other questions?
A quick question, clarification.
Okay.
James, I would just be curious to know, is soil composition taken into consideration in the modeling? I'd be curious to know of an absorption rate and or saturation rate to understand what those, I guess, nine inches and 72 hour threshold in meeting that. I would be curious if there's other means for us to identify, maybe infrastructure as one is looking at what the reduction in potential, I guess it would be the hazardous zones. And so I would just be curious to know if there's other, you know, other ways for us to, I guess, address this mapping as presented.
Okay, so I think I heard two questions in there. One, is soil composition or soil type accounted for? And then two, can additional, I think if I interpreted it right, is additional infrastructure, additional existing infrastructure incorporation into the modeling a possibility? Did I get those right?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great. So to the first one regarding soil, yes, soil type is considered at the hydrologic stage. So that's at the point at which you're you're looking at rainfall coming out of the sky before that water becomes available for any kind of ponding. First, the the water that would be absorbed into the ground through a process called infiltration is is accounted for. And that is, as you just pointed out, is directly influenced by the soil type and the soil characteristics there, specifically for the type of modeling that was done here. The hydrologic soil group is the most important for that. And yes, so that that is something that is accounted for. And I my memory isn't good enough to remember what types of soil group might happen to be in this area in particular. But yeah, there is a variety of different infiltration characteristics throughout the the area that was studied. And so with with regard to the second question having to do with infrastructure, that's that's a that's a good question. It's a it's a perennial balance between, you know, how much detail do we show with the how much effort and cost would it be to actually model and account for it? There aren't any hard and fast rules that prohibit you including smaller infrastructure such as storm drain systems and stuff like that, at least not that I'm aware of, nor that I've ever heard FEMA refer to in any fashion. They're just typically not included. And is it possible they could be included and things could be revised from this with, say, an additional study, an additional LOMER? Yeah, maybe. And you already mentioned the possibility of incorporating fill, but I, as I, if I understand correctly, it sounds like you've got a cut fill balance requirement in your code as well, so that, you know, it makes it a little bit more involved, a little more difficult to to just kind of fill the area. But the the, let's see, if you want to put it this way, the ramping up of the the model resolution and the capabilities of the model, it can be done. It's and and the basis of the model already does exist, but modifying that and improving it to the point where you could include those smaller scale features, that's, you know, in my experience, it can be done. I don't know how much it would affect it. That would be, if you will, a crap shoot. You'd have to wait and see until you're done to see how much it might actually help or influence it, but it could change it a little bit.
I have a quick follow up.
Yes. And then James, I'd be curious to know, do infrastructure projects such as bio swells, incorporating those as a water runoff infrastructure to reduce infiltration? Is that something that other communities maybe incorporate as a way to offset the flood? I guess it would be the volume of water within the city boundaries.
I, in my 20 years or so of doing this, I have not seen, well, actually bio swells haven't been really around and employed that that long, but since their introduction, I have I have never seen bio swells be included as part of a flood hazard study. They're much more commonly employed at the, at say, the the drainage master planning type level, which usually looks at a range of flood events, smaller scales. And so it's typically not included for something of the magnitude of a 1% event of a 100 year event, because they just, they really don't have that much of an influence. I mean, you could make a ginormous bio swell and it might have some influence on it, but the amount that they can improve or increase the infiltration into the ground is, in comparison, my 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 instinct says is just, it's much smaller.
Thank you.
Of course.
Don't say Hagen.
James, I'm over here. I I kind of a contextual question. So your modeling is based on a rainfall or precipitation of nine inches over 72 hours, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So as a as a frame of reference, you know, what was the total for the 96 flood in a 72 hour frame timeframe?
Oh, great question. Do I have that number at my fingertips? I don't. I want to say, Jeff, do you have that nearby? I want to say it was eight something?
Yep.
I don't know. I know that in the IDA, there is a graph where the various big rainstorms are shown as the rain level over time occurred. They're like a hydrographic curve. And so you kind of, it's kind of a guess, and then you guys have what you ended up selecting.
I'm going to see if I can find that value while we're, if you're willing to table that, I'll see if I can look that up. I have the report here and I can probably put my fingers on it without too much delay here.
Okay, then there's a quick second part that maybe you can digest while you're looking.
Sure.
You know, given that we are in the realm of extreme weather events globally, and did you do any modeling on such extremes, let's say 12 inches in 72 hours or 15 inches in 72 hours and what the ramifications of those would be?
No, we didn't take it up any higher than than any additional depth than what we did here. The the sensitive analyses that we did do typically looked at the timing, like whether or not we did it over a shorter duration storm versus a longer kind of drawn out storm. And then we also looked at various levels within the Columbia or within the Multnomah Channel out there. Those are the two that really we thought had the most influence on the overall mapping behavior. And there was some influence definitely from changing the timing, the duration of the storm event. But we didn't look at anything of a magnitude of a depth of that size, no.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
You have a question, Commissioner?
Yes.
Yes, please. I, since this is an artificial system.
Margaret, could you pull the microphone closer so I can hear you?
Nobody ever tells me to talk louder.
For them.
Right, okay. Since this drainage district is an artificial system, I would think that there would be some consideration taken to the management of the pumping system when you look at this. Because if you manage your pumping system, you can alleviate some buildup of water if you know that it is coming. My only experience is that I live in that, in a situation like this. So we manage our pumping system to the weather conditions so that we don't have buildup of water in our drainage district. So is that isn't ever taken into consideration? And this is a pretty high powered pumping system you have here. I'd love to have it in the Marshland Drainage District.
So Margaret, we have four pumps that do 33,000 gallons a minute. And the original design, there was the core, this is like in the 70s when they upgraded our pump system, and basically roughly of our four pumps, two are to deal deal with Jackson Creek, and the other two are deal with the rainfall. And then it's part of the ONM to draw down ahead if you know it's coming, to make room to take water. It's also part of the computations to just let lower areas. And a couple other points is that, you know, it's a whole computer model, but it all assumes it all works. And in 96, they didn't. We had trouble with some of the pumps and the core came in and rebuilt them and changed the impeller design at their expense. So that's part of being in their good graces, which is important. And then what if they don't work? I mean, what if power goes out? We spent half a million bucks on this study. We haven't done anything yet to actually improve the drainage. So that's, you know, something to consider because it is theoretical, it's based on projections, but what else can you do? I mean, that's it's the best that there that we know of. West has worked for the county or Multnomah County, Soho Island, and numerous other places, if the city themselves on the Scappus Creek flood issue. And anyway, that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So if there's no other questions, and this is kind of more for Peter. So what if, I know it's impossible to mobilize this quick, but what if Air Park goes out before these maps are approved and that infills to the current maps code, and then these maps are put into place?
Well, I think that the most, the most important thing is that they're accurate maps. And, you know, there was a flood event in 1996. Why did that happen? A certain amount of rain and a certain amount of equipment failure. And, you know, if if Air Park gets out there and does cut fill under the current maps, you know, I think that they would, they would ask that this be remapped based on that new data. But I think that the implications of this mapping go far beyond Air Park. I mean, this is a, this is going to have huge impacts potentially on our buildable lands, inventory, housing needs analysis, future economic development. And so I I think that that's why we as a staff wanted to flag this issue and get it in front of everyone, because this has global implications for the county. That isn't to infer that any of this mapping is incorrect. It is based on the 1996 flood, which, you know, happened because of rain and equipment failure. But it, given the potential economic development impact and on the rest of our housing and understanding that there are topography issues of going west, if you're Scappus, building on hills is expensive. We we just want to make sure that everyone's working off of the best data. And to the extent that we can, we understand all the impacts that this will have. And again, our cut fill balance requires a one to one ratio, which can be really challenging for developers if development is is in a flood point. And 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 should be, because, you know, we we want people to be safe and we want their homes to be safe. And that's something that the city's taken very seriously. And we work with, we work with the Department of Land Conservation Development on all these issues. Lori regularly confers with them. But we also, you know, we brought inland, it was to serve city, the county and the region as far as future economic development. And so if if something's going to have that major of an impact on it, again, that's another reason why the four of us thought it was really important to flag these maps before they get adopted. And to the extent, whether it's through a partnership with Air Park, partnership with the county, whomever the stakeholders are, maybe the port, just to ensure that we have the best possible data. If, you know, if if the existing infrastructure is going to have some impact, that we would understand what it is. And then, you know, another alternative would be if if it might be less expensive to bring in more equipment, have higher pumping capacity so that more land might be available than than just kind of the status quo that we see here. And those are all decisions that, you know, you as the council would and the county would make, depending on data and analysis and making sure that what we have is accurate and that we have a full understanding. And and to the Air Park Development Group too, and Ed, who's been working on this project for a decade. And, you know, we were at a point where it kind of seemed like there was light at the end of the tunnel and the well was about to true up. And there's been a lot of interest lately from folks that are very interested in coming in. And so this was a major game changer in that. So we just want to make sure that a map doesn't get adopted if we don't have a full understanding of all the impacts on the community.
So.
Go ahead.
Well, I, listening to you, Mr. Watts, is there additional study that could be done that would provide more accurate data?
Well, that the study, the additional study that was mentioned was looking at the non-ditch piping. So what impact would that have? It seems like it would have some. We don't know. Again, this is, you know, this, we got, we've got this in the last couple of weeks and seeing what the impact on Ed would be and gone through the code to see what we would have to do for his development. And we've been processing all this in real time. And so kind of our thought is we needed to get this in front of, unfortunately, we had this work session scheduled so we can communicate directly with the county. But we wanted to get this on everyone's radar as soon as possible. And then I think those are all conversations we can have.
Okay, because, so I do know that if I remember the 96 flood correctly, because I was here, I was the last car that got into Scappus because they were closing the back roads behind me. Leading up to that flood, there was like six to 10 inches of snow in the low lying hills above the city. And what impact did that have on top of the rain? So we had almost nine inches of rain, but we had quite a bit of water up in the hills. I mean, does that account for that when you just say 100 year flood, eight inches, but you already had stored water getting ready to come down? And it really, it took the banana belt hitting us at that exact time after a big snow.
And I add also the dams were letting water over at the same time.
Any comments or thoughts on that, Jason?
James.
James, sorry.
Right, okay.
I don't have my readers on, so I can't see your name down into the corner.
All good. I understand. Yes, so the 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 event in 1996, as you characterized it, is what they refer to as a rain on snow event. And and it is a, it is a bad combination when you've got that lingering snowpack that's hanging around and a big wet warm front comes off the Pacific and dumps a bunch of rain on it. Yes, that did play definitely, that played a role or it had an influence on the manner in which the flooding played out in 1996. That is not the type of of event that has been studied or is even, to my knowledge, ever studied for a flood hazard modeling and mapping process. The dynamics there are exceedingly complex. And there's just so many different variables, like, well, how much snow, you know, what's what's a what's a 1% reasonable amount of 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 snow to have left on the ground at a particular moment for the for the rainfall then to fall on? And it's that, to my knowledge, it's not something that's that is that is modeled for these types of exercises. But, you know, your your memory and recollection is correct. That is, that is what happened in 96.
So I I do know we have a picture of it in the planning department and community development. How how old does that picture map up to these light art maps?
Well, it's it's a, it's fairly close. I haven't looked at it.
I haven't looked at it everywhere, but it's...
Microphone, please.
It's, it's fairly close to the mapping that, that we initially started with, not this iteration, but the early version.
Okay.
I mean, we weren't seeing a, a real impact that, that you would assume you would get with the district's pumping facilities operating in accordance with their O&M. But that's, I mean, I guess that's sort of to be expected, because a lot of, a lot of the flood areas that were, that are causing concern for all of us are in areas that are isolated from the district's channels. And so, for instance, you know, we've got a number of subdivisions and areas that are, you know, just isolated, just because the low points, a lot of times in a subdivision is a storm pond, or it's a road where there's a catch basin. And so if you don't essentially pull that into consideration, that becomes a flood area. And that's exactly what's being shown here. There's seven distinct basins that are drained by public infrastructure that essentially drain all of the developed city land within city limits. And I guess, just to address the point of Ed's property, he has, there's existing culverts underneath the road today that are there that would drain out these flood areas, and there's, there are small channels made to facilitate drainage, so that even the existing land wouldn't, wouldn't be flooded. And if you look at the contours, you'll notice that, you know, the area that's primarily addressed in the letter from Ed's attorney is at elevation 14. Well, there's, you know, there's areas to the east of that that are at elevation 10, and there's culverts that directly link those two.
Are those culverts 25-year storm culverts, or?
Well, no, they're 100-year culverts. And in fact, our code actually requires that if you have an isolated drainage system on your property, that you design it to the 100, not the 25-year.
It seems like that at the very least, on those properties where there's culverts like that already built, that you would look at the modeling and model it to those culverts that have happened built, not just assume that there's nothing there.
Well, I don't think those were pulled in because they weren't a part of the district's...
He said that we didn't use any, we didn't do any culvert...
No city.
No city. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, at the very least, it seems like we should look at that before we go approving a map, that maybe these, what we've already required them to put in would handle a potential problem.
Well, we would create some issues for even areas that are fully developed. You know, some of the subdivisions where there's roads that are in the 100-year, I'm not even sure what the implication would be if we wanted to go back and do a road project where we want to do an overlay, because that technically would be fill in the 100-year.
Well, yeah, I mean, so we'd need to look at all those, obviously.
Yeah, and just to address the, the comment that was made about our storm system not comparing, I think it's a little bit inaccurate to say that this 100-year event is different than our 100-year event. There are really two separate, we're, we're talking about this as a 100-year event, but, you know, in the sort of classical sense of that definition, that's a 24-hour storm. And in this case, the model is a 72-hour storm. So you have about twice the rainfall, but it's occurring over three days, not a single day. So if this event were to occur in 24 hours, I would completely agree with James that our system would be inundated. But this event, as it's modeled, is occurring over three days. So the peak, the peaks, we don't know. I don't know what they are. I don't have that data, but they're, they're much less, because they're, they're sort of, you know, occurring over the course of three days. So you wouldn't see, you know, if we get a 4.75-inch rain event in 24 hours, which is our 100-year year, yeah, it's going to inundate our storm system. But we know that it, it handles that fairly quickly. Within a few hours, it's, it's drained out. So I don't think the peak during this modeled event for the district would really, I mean, not, you know, in some cases, it may inundate an older storm system, but, you know, it's worth, I think it's worth taking a look at, certainly.
I, I agree. So, is that what your question was? Yeah, okay. Question?
I guess for our team here, what is the next steps and timeline? What's the next move?
Well, I think the next step is that...
We are interested in looking a little further.
Yeah, I mean, the next step really is, is, there's two things. One is to look at modeling the city's infrastructure within this, with, you know, within the bigger model. And I don't know if it can be broken into seven sub-basins and modeled separately, so it's not such a big task in terms of the computing. The second thing is also to explore the, this issue with the Air Park property, in that it's, it's sort of in my mind, an active construction site. They have an active grading permit, they have an active 1,200-seat permit with the DEQ. It's a multi-phase project. They fully intended to mitigate the wetlands in Phase Four, or in, in this early phase, Phase One, which is where you see the flooding south of the cul-de-sac. They anticipated that going away, anticipated filling it. At current, you couldn't sort of say, well, let's go in there and fill it with 10, 11, 12 feet of fill, which is what they intend to do, because they can't mitigate those wetlands.
Fill the other areas.
Yeah. So if you think of it as an active construction project, there's going to be pits and holes everywhere, right? You fly over it, you do some LiDAR, and look, there's a hole. You, you wouldn't do that on an active construction site and say, in the middle of a project, oh, you've got a floodplain. I'll stop, now you can't develop your site. I mean, go look at the, the 80-unit apartment complex on, on Second Street, there's two big giant pits there. If we were to fly over and pull it into the mapping, it'd be in the 100-year instantly. That's sort of how I look at this. What, what we really need to do is have, you know, the agencies consider this somewhat more holistically and in this timeframe, and say, yes, this is going to be developed. It's intended to be, it's a part of the master plan that's been in place for a long time, and see if we can work something out where, you know, we either utilize existing drainage system there to prove that it won't drain or flood, or that it's intended to be developed in such a way that it shouldn't be looted in the mapping.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we're getting close to 7 o'clock. We're not going to end here, because we have another item on the agenda. So we're going to start the meeting, and we're going to approve an agenda that has this EJ Smith Bridge works, part of the work session, to be the first item of business after roll call. And do a short discussion on EJ Smith Bridge before going into executive session on our hiring process for our future city manager, if that's okay with our commissioners. All right.
Perfect. So, Mr. Chair, this is Senator Johnson. This part of the discussion about the floodplain and the mapping is concluded?
It will be concluded, correct.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, I'm, if I may say, speaking for myself, because I cannot speak for my entire board, but I would certainly encourage all of us to discuss this and learn a little bit more before we leave some developable property out of the possibility of developing. We need that developable land.
Yes.
That's two votes.
All right. You guys, you can stay there.
Yeah.
You can stay there.
We could continue the, we could continue the work session, if you would like.
Well, I would just like to, we could start the meeting and do it that way, too. Doesn't matter which way, right? Well, yeah, but we've scheduled our meeting for 7 o'clock. Oh, because it's just a work session. Okay, then why don't we just continue and make it easy? All right, next item is EJ Smith Bridge. Rebuild it, please. We're done.
Not listening.
Commissioner McGruder, the EJ Smith Bridge, we're just going to move on and continue the work session. Rebuild it, please.
He sees the construction person.
Make that happen.
What is the plan of the EJ Smith Bridge?
It's your bridge.
It's less. Needs to be fixed.
He's speaking to the microphone.
I don't like rambishing in here.
I know, I know. It was on the agenda.
I see that Mike Russell, our Public Works Director, is on the call.
Are we doing that next year, Mike?
It's always next year.
Right.
Next year never gets here.
I have to be honest, I'm not familiar with the issues. I thought the bridge was replaced.
No, that's a JP West Bridge was replaced.
Okay.
So this is the next one downstream, EJ Smith, up above the fire station.
And it is, it's not a structural issue, it's a flooding issue, correct?
Correct.
So it's a matter of raising the bridge?
Chris?
Yes, it's, yes, I believe so.
Right. At this point, there are no plans to do that, but it is something we can continue to look at. You know, it would be a million-dollar project, and the road fund just doesn't have those funds at this time. But, yeah, happy to look further into it and get it into the work plan.
Mr. Mayor, with your permission, may I speak?
Senator Johnson, go ahead.
I think that it would be exceptionally prudent for the county and the city to work together to try to get the specs and the ramifications and a basic price to do this work. There is still some ARPA money left to the legislature. There was a high premium placed on infrastructure, particularly water and sewer projects this last go-around. And with Ms. Rain's substantial help, you'll know that the city, as I spoke at your last meeting, did very, very well. But to have this, this project described, priced, it doesn't have to be engineered, but the possibility that we could go to either the short session in February and, and see about the possibility of getting any additional money. I don't know whether or not the E-Board could take this up without agency assistance, and if it's a county road, we wouldn't have ODOT to help us. But if there's a fighting chance to get this paid for with any of the residual ARPA money, having a written narrative and a ballpark price would be extremely helpful. And I will commit to both the city and the county to try to carry this forward to the legislature, to see if there can be any of the American Rescue Plan money that could be available to do this project.
Thank you, Senator Johnson.
With that, I'll commit to helping and working with the city to develop that scope of work, and we can see what we can get. That's great.
If I could be so bold as to suggest that you work directly with Ms. Rain's, with, with Ms. Rain's substantial help, we were able to bring home nearly $14 million to Scappus. And that was because of her very nimble staff and her willingness to work with me to try to get the project sufficiently described that I could make the case in Salem. It will be more difficult, given we're looking at a short session rather than a long budget session, but I, I, you can't win the lottery if you don't buy a ticket, and the ticket is that description and a kind of ballpark price.
So she made a pitch for the Oregon Lottery as well. All right, so any questions from anyone? I think we've pretty much got a way forward there. Thank you, Senator Johnson.
Well, I can't make any promises, but, but truly, I think working in collaboration, and we, we at least lift it up for legislative consideration, and I'll do my damnedest to see what I can do to help you.
Thank you. I think we have marching orders.
I think so. Thank you.
All right, well, do you guys have any other comments? I think that between Senator Johnson and Mr. Russell and our staff, that we've kind of know where to go on this one. Thank you. So why don't we go ahead and end the work session? And thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.